Good evening to our committee of the whole meeting. So on June ninth, two thousand twenty five, we acknowledge that the sacred land on which Smith Falls is now located has been the site of human activity for over ten thousand years and is rich in indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin and Inshunabe Nation. We're grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We are also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in the making of the Rideau Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all our relations. Together, may we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship, being mindful of generations to come. So with that, we'll call the meeting to order at five o'clock. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by councillor Miller, seconded by councillor Robinson. All in favor? That is carried. There's any disclosure or peculiar area interest this evening? Seeing none, we'll look for the approval of the minutes of the May twenty sixth meeting. Moved by councillor Robinson, seconded by councillor Brennan, that the minutes of the May twenty sixth, that's twenty five, and June second, two thousand twenty five, committee of the whole meetings be approved and circulated. All in favor? That's carried. We have no delegations tonight. I think we have one director's report. C O Morris?
Correct, and it's with Director Clark.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to really quickly update everyone and extend an invitation for all of you and to all of those watching at home to join us this weekend at Duck Island for the Pow Wow. We are excited to have about thirty vendors this year, which is almost triple what we normally have, and we've got a whole wakadoo invited dancers as well. So we're very excited to be back in a really big way. Grand entry, which is kind of when everything kicks off, starts around noon-ish, noon-ish on both Saturday and Sunday, so we are very excited to see you all there.
Any questions? Seeing none, looking forward to Saturday at noon.
Right on. Ish.
Ish. I'll put eleven thirty in my calendar. No consent reports or in camera sessions, so we'll go right to ten point one, a word of contract for supply and place traffic controllers, but Director McMon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of council. The report I have in front of you this evening is with respect to the award of a contract being twenty-five dash P W dash zero one four, which is for the supply and placement of two traffic controllers in the town of Smith Falls. The, um, the report serves as just a, um, I guess as a, uh, serves as a, to give you the results of the tendering process for this particular project. Um, as you can see, on page two, under table two, we had one submission from Partham Engineering Limited. Uh, they performed the contract for two traffic controller replacements for us in two thousand twenty-four, last year, um, and they've historically, um, previous to last year, they were a traffic controller, uh, maintenance contractor as well, so very experienced in this work. Why the report's coming to you this evening is because of the fact that it's over budget by sixteen and a half thousand dollars. You'll see in the, the body of the report that we had a hundred thousand budgeted for this particular, uh, project, and with one bid, uh, we're over budget. Under budget financial implications, you'll see that we concurrently, as we tendered this project, we also tendered for the installation of three pedestrian crossovers in town. We closed on that particular tender, and there's, um, yeah, we got really good, really good pricing for the, uh, the P X O installations in town this year, um, which left a, uh, a balance of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents from that particular project, which will more than offset the sixteen and a half thousand dollars, um, overage for the traffic controller project. So with that, I think that provides a bit of a summary. It's pretty, uh, pretty administrative, administrative at this point, uh, coming to council for approval. Um, so I'm happy to stop talking and take any questions you may have.
Great, thanks Director McMon. Any questions? Seeing thumbs up, I've got some questions then. Um, I had a question, actually, I forgot the answer to this weekend, and that was that we did the controller at the Beckwith-Lumbridge-Brockville-Jasper last year. Is that correct? Um, Brockville, is it on the table?
Beckwith-Lumbridge-Brockville-Jasper was done in two thousand twenty-four, correct?
Twenty-four. And the question was, why didn't we put the same system in that we put in at the top of Beckwood Street when we redid that one?
Um, it's a good question. I can come back to you with an answer on that. I don't have an answer this evening, but.
Okay, sorry, I thought maybe we, anyway, I guess I don't remember. Were using those systems for the ones putting in, we're putting in this year, or is that, uh, is that the microwave system?
Yes, yeah, we're putting in that, uh, for the applications for this year. Um, I'd have to go back and check with staff on that to see why we didn't that particular intersection, but I can get back to all of committee, uh, through email.
Great. Seeing no further questions and thumbs up, uh, great to see that we're still on budget when we combine the two of them, so.
Yep, and if I could, just, um, considering we're going to be rolling into two thousand twenty-six budget deliberations here before too, too long, uh, as councils aware, um, when I started here in two thousand twenty-one, I recognize that many of the traffic controllers in town absent, of course, Beckwood Street and some of the recent upgrades that had been done when I started, uh, are outdated and antiquated and need to be replaced, so we kind of started the, uh, two replacements on an annual basis, and, uh, I guess I'll preface budget deliberations. I will continue to put that in budgets going forward until we're caught up with replacements and we all have them being current, so.
Okay, great. So bring that to next week's council meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Director McMon. So ten point two is out of budget expenditure requests with Director Clark.
So I am seeking, if I can find the report, not that, uh, not more than twenty thousand dollars in approval of an out-of-budget expenditure. Essentially, what's happening is we would like to secure some signage that would allow us to be, um, more efficient and effective partners to some of our, uh, folks in the crowd, like the D B A, um, and others, as well as be prepared for our own special events and activities. Uh, at this point, we, the town does not have enough detour signage or special event signage, and so, uh, Director McMon and I have been having some ongoing conversations to chat about how we can beef up our own inventory, turn it into something that's rentable stock, and then, uh, make sure that we don't have to rent from out of town and we can do it internally. So, uh, we're looking for upwards of twenty thousand dollars at the, at the maximum, uh, to purchase signage stands and weights to support these activities.
Great, thanks Director Clark, councillor Miller.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, support your recommendation and to thank you, Director Clark and your staff, and Director McMon and, and your team as well, for all the work to support the D B A and their bike night. They're nodding in the back there, but, uh, I know that they're exceptionally grateful for town staff and all the support, so thank you very, very much.
Councillor McKenna.
Likewise, I'm sure, just, I know when the old Homey Committee, when we started looking at renting some of this material, it's very, very expensive. So having our own in-house, and it's wonderful, it's a nice problem to have, that we're having so many great events, that we need our own products and tools in, in, in-house, so I'm supportive of the, uh, of the right, of the ask as well.
Great, but I'm wondering, just as a visual, are we talking like orange signs on a base and barricades, or what does it look like that we're doing?
Uh, so that would be, um, potentially some orange signs on the base, uh, more things, lots of barricades, but we're, we're trying to do that internally. Uh, but it would be not an exact replica, but much of the signage that you saw for the detours, that, that type of thing. So some would be, um, signage with, with, uh, dates that we could swap out, things like that. So it's not just the sort of detours, but it would be the highway signs, so.
Critical signs on bases?
Yeah.
Great, so I'm seeing nodding heads for the recommendation. Thumbs up. Thank you, Director Clark, and next we've got the trailhead.
Okay, um, so my next report for you this evening, uh, is, uh, essentially, upon my arrival here a couple of years ago, we started the conversation around a trailhead for the Cataract Way Trail. Uh, a site was discussed and selected, and a design for that site has been completed. Uh, it is an unopened road allowance, um, and it's now before you for review and consideration. The intention of this, uh, in, we had some conversations with the Cataract Way Trail folks, as well as with planning and with, um, Director McMon and, and others, uh, was to discuss, or was to, to create a trailhead facility, um, which is essentially a parking lot to start, um, look at what we want to do in terms of, um, expanded, uh, infrastructure potentially over time, um, and make sure that we have something that's accessible, that, uh, doesn't take away from, from parking on the street or a crowded area. So it would be an accessible trailhead, specific to the Cataract Way Trail in this particular situation. Um, there was a forty thousand dollar approval in the two thousand twenty-four capital budget. We've, uh, picked away at that to get some of the design and some of the topographic stuff done as well, uh, but I would be open to questions and discussion.
Great, councillor McKenna.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, the parking lot, um, in the winter, snowmobiles use that. If you come in with a trailer, is there allowance for a truck and a studio trailer, or something? Because that seems to be angled parking?
Angle parking?
Pardon?
Angle parking?
Or, or, I don't know what you would call it, is that I'm most unsure. So all I'm wondering is if you pull in with a trailer or three trucks with three trailers, how do they park? So that's all.
Okay, we can take that back.
All right.
Councillor Miller.
Thank you. Thanks for your report, Director Clark, um, and I'm really excited to see this, uh, conversation get started. I know that we've had a brief conversation about the location, but in fact, we haven't debated other location options or, um, looked at the kind of bigger picture, and because it's one of our strategic priorities, that's what I'm really looking for is, is, um, uh, a temporary parking lot is great if that's what we could do this year, because I know forty thousand doesn't get us very far. But my vision for a trailhead is much more than that, and the Cataract Way Trail is only one of many trails that come to a head near Smith Falls, and so, um, I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity, uh, I think staff have had more fulsome conversations than us, is there an opportunity to see the vision, to look at different options, or where do, what do you see happening after the parking lot?
Uh, so I think in, in a specific to this, if I may, um, this is specific to the Cataract Way Trail. This is not about connecting the O V R T, this is not about connecting the Eastern Ontario Rail Loop, or any of the other, um, trails that run through town. I think in terms of the strategic plan, the longer-term vision is to have something in a separate location that knits, uh, more effectively together. Um, instinctively, I would suggest the Memorial Community Center is, is an area that, um, we could better utilize, that we could build a trailhead at, uh, with trail facilities and with, with, um, not just parking. Uh, I think that would be significantly different than a Cataract Way Trail trailhead, which is essentially a parking lot with a sign and some garbage and some, you know, directional information that says, this is how you get back to town, and this is where you, you jump off from. Um, I think that the bigger vision too, with potentially connecting in a zone of recreation around the Memorial Community Center, not just the arena, not just the, um, you know, potential other facilities that could be there in the future, we need to, um, we can, we can get those trails into that space relatively easily. So part of the bigger picture is to look at, um, strategic item six point one, which is coming back next, uh, two weeks from now, I believe, Carrie, uh, to discuss that the intention is to try to knit those all together in some way. We still don't know how to get the O V R T here. Do we go over, do we go under? We're not sure, um, but we want to make sure it's in the least, um, at least costly, but most effective and most efficient and safest way possible. In addition to that, I think there's some, some other pieces where, uh, part of the, the desktop exercise around the walk sheds that I had Foton do, uh, around Parks and Greenspace area, um, that will allow us to identify some P X Os that we need to work with Public Works to build in, so we can get things, uh, people and, uh, bicycles and so on through town. And I think the other piece that I would also, uh, comment on is trailheads, and I'm an avid hiker and I'm about to go on a big hike with one hand as opposed to another, uh, as opposed, so opposed to both, um, is that we actually often, uh, it's not uncommon to drive a trail to a town and into the community. So I think if we're trying to look ways around it, I would rather bring it through the heart of our community and into the spaces that we already have. So the bigger picture is not just a parking lot, that's for safety, that's for cleanliness, that's because we are crowding our streets and so on, and using the parking lot that they've asked us not to, pre, you know, the other side. So I think this, this solves that problem specifically to the Cataract Way Trail, but the bigger picture, the longer term, is actually about doing something more substantial.
Right, can I follow up?
Yeah.
Thank you, and thanks for that, but that's exactly what I kind of needed to hear, because in, uh, council's last term, you know, I know there was a lot of discussion around the trails bringing people to town, and so I don't want to build a trailhead that invites people to walk out of town first, right? So I want to see how we can draw it, so I, I, I really like what you're saying, so I support the forty thousand that's in the budget for a temporary trailhead to get cars off Ferrera, um, and I think too, I was talking to C O Morris earlier, um, in terms of the transportation master plan, and that may need to be a road allowance, so I look forward to your next presentation with the bigger picture.
Sounds good.
Councillor Quinn.
Thank you, thank you, Stephanie. This is very interesting, and one of the things, um, with the Cataract Way Trail, they're wanting to start marking kilometer markings on the trail, so they needed to know where they were going to start, and they were quite happy to think that was going to be something there, a starting point for sure, and you're right, this is a bigger picture of how we then bring the other trails all together into a, a central location. Um, with the, um, with the cat trail, if this trailhead goes in, then can we eliminate the trail along Ferrera Drive, so that land that's there can now be developed?
I had not considered that, uh, but I would want to discuss more fulsome with my colleagues, maybe C O Morris has something to say about that.
Yeah, through the chair, good, good question. So council may recall when we, uh, when we developed the site plan for the Otis property, uh, the Marx Work Warehouse, uh, that he agreed to, uh, provide space, uh, for the trail, so we won't have to go around. The reason it went around initially, uh, my understanding is Loblaw's used to own the property and they didn't want the trail going through their property. Otis, um, looks at it differently, they look at it as a benefit to their commercial property. So, um, so Mr. Grankey's working with them, uh, the next phase of development, we'll see, um, the trail, uh, through the property, more direct route, um, which rightly you point out, uh, could free up the now-owned town property for a higher and arguably better use.
Thank you, thank you for that, and thank you, Stephanie. This is very interesting. Appreciate your work on this.
Thanks, um, my question is related to the parking need there. What data or what information do we have that the current parking capacity of the street is overloaded, or what makes this a priority when we look at all the things we need to do in our parks right now?
I'm going to be quite frank, because I was, uh, given some, when I arrived, said this is what we're going to do, so that is a priority, because I take my marching orders from folks like you. So, um, do I, I would assume, uh, prior to me, and, and may perhaps this is an asinine assumption, but I would assume that there was some, some information that was gathered during that, we can, I can look into that and bring it back. Um, I think part of it is, is anecdotal in terms of my own, uh, conversations about people, um, having some comments and concerns around parking in that general area, or not knowing that there's actually a trailhead there, because they, uh, there isn't one that's defined. I think I would also, uh, suggest it's not just about car loads, it's about making sure that we have a physical space to go to, because people plan adventures and do those types of things, and so they need a physical marking that's not a parking lot of a, of a Wendy's or, or whatever. So, um, I think it's, it's maybe a double, um, a double opportunity where we can take the, the pressure off of the streets, but also make sure that we have a destination for people to go to.
Good, I guess for me, when I, C O Morris?
Um, just to augment, uh, Director Clark's response, um, i- if we go back to the previous, um, strategic plan, it did appear in, in the previous one, um, and we couldn't get traction because we needed to sort out a few land ownership issues, primarily the Loblaw's land, and, and, so now that that's, now that we have a clear runway to straighten it all out, uh, it opened up an opportunity to, to actually move ahead with, with the trailhead facility, but it's, it's been a priority for some time.
So I, I guess where my head's at with this right now is, um, we've got, uh, we've, we've had traffic issues in that neighborhood where we try to do traffic calming initiatives, and we know that parking in the street slows down the traffic because it narrows the roadway. Um, I've never gone to the trailhead and, and seen the street parking full, so I just don't see that without hard information of, of why, of all the things we need to do at all, at one time, a parking lot, right now, building a parking lot there is, is the top priority, but I think the other side of this too is that, um, uh, we've got, um, you know, we've got this future development that's happening there. I, I love the idea of the water station and the washrooms, and for me, that would be the priority over the parking. If we get to the point where the street parking's not adequate, um, then look at building a parking lot, but to, to build a parking lot now, I think the vision from the last term of council that I still would like to see is that trail hub that connects the O V R T with the Cataract Way Trail, with any other networks that we build in, inside town, and, and this isn't big enough for, you know, it's just not looking at that big picture, so I don't see, for me, this isn't a priority, to spend money on a gravel parking lot now. I, I'd support the washrooms and the water station first, but, um, would rather see one central hub. Councillor Quinn?
Thank you. Um, I have to disagree with you, because sitting on the Cataract Way Trail Board, there have been issues with people parking, because there's many people that use the trail and they don't use it just for a few hours. We've had people that have used it for a couple of days, and there was one couple came to me and they were very concerned, where could they park, leave their vehicle for a couple of days, know that they weren't going to get towed or ticketed or whatever. So this could give people like that, that opportunity of a place to park and know that it, they're in a safe parking spot, and it doesn't, they don't need a big glamorous parking spot, they just need a spot where they feel that they're out of traffic, they're off the roadway, and that they're fine to stay there for a couple of days, because many people do use it for more than just a couple of hours.
Yeah, I think it's a great point, it's just, where's the, what's our data, what's our point, saying that of all the things and all the parks we've got, we need to spend the money now, but, and Murpencle?
Yeah, I think in an ideal world, we would have that place identified today that would enable us to connect all trails, and we know, uh, the C P line north of town is a real barrier to connect to the O V R T, uh, right into the town without going around it, under, over, whatever, which is a much bigger conversation, one we've been talking about for years, uh, one that may never happen, in, in the way we like to see it. Um, the cat trail is a, is a real recreational asset, it's, it's highly utilized and, um, have, having space here for, really for people to, to park, for staging, whether it's, if it's, uh, summer, winter maintenance would be a question, uh, staging for people to drop snowmobiles in the winter, people to come by and, and, as councillor Quinn said, park their car, hop with their bikes and go, um, maybe they're, maybe they're not coming all the way into town now because they don't want to park, maybe they're going out to, uh, County Road One, uh, or County Road Five, which both have staging, which both have their trailheads now, so maybe it'll pull people in, give them a chance to do the entire trail system, and it's underutilized space today, and I think it's an opportunity to do something with it suitable for the time being. I think a role, a more robust discussion in the future could determine, do we end up putting washrooms here, um, and, and, and water service here, uh, or do we look at some other place if there's a, a way of solving that issue with the O V R T? Uh, so for now, I'll, I'll support the recommendation, but the question I do have is more for, I guess, um, Director McMon is, will there be winter maintenance here to ensure people can use it year-round?
Simple answer is yes.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks for mentioning that.
All right, so seeing no other hands up, uh, we're good to move forward with the staff recommendation, which brings us to, uh, the E S F B A M O U amendment report.
I thought I'd really stack them in tonight, so, anyway, my third and final report for this evening is related to an amendment, uh, to the existing M O U for the downtown Smith Falls Business Association. Uh, so through conversations with, um, uh, the chair and their staff, uh, we've come to develop this, this, um, amendment to the existing M O U. Specifically, this is related to the parquet on Russell Street, um, and we just wanted to have clarity, we kind of generally know in terms of operations what we're doing and who owns what and what the, what the boundaries are, but more specifically, we wanted to be very clear, uh, and so we've, we've outlined this in the, um, M O U, the amendment, uh, just very briefly, they will transfer the ownership of the park infrastructure, specifically the benches, the planters, and the gazebo that will be installed at some point in the very near future, uh, to the town, and will be responsible for ongoing maintenance of those items, um, and they, as the, um, art-loving individuals, we're more operational, they're more artistic, uh, will be in charge of the art-related things, um, so the, uh, decorations on the sidewalk and so on. Uh, specifically, it's also, uh, just clarifying something that wasn't involved in the previous M O U, which is the, uh, the mural that's adjacent to Shoppers, that's ours, and that's the, uh, the town's responsibility.
Councillor Miller.
Um, so I'm the council rep on the D B A, so thank you, Director Clark, for working with the group to get this where it is, and the D B A is in full support of this M O U, and I know you're working with other groups on this too, and I think it's really important because it just crosses the Ts and dots the Is and makes sure everybody knows which lane they belong in, and so, thanks again for this.
Councillor Brennan.
Yeah, thanks, I support this, uh, wholeheartedly, and, uh, we've heard, uh, a month or two ago about the approvals are going to be made there. I guess my question is, or my question is, um, have we considered some sort of a security camera at that location, since it's going to be refurbished?
Uh, I certainly haven't, but we could potentially look into it, yep, yep.
Councillor McKenna?
No, I have a thumbs up.
All right, so seeing thumbs up, that is a cheaper an aneasement, so. Bring that to the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Clark. We've got a website upgrade agreement with Director Dalbernext.
Good evening. The purpose of this report is to bring some information to council and, and also seek some approval, uh, pre-budget approval. So, um, we're currently using a website, uh, through the services of a company called G H D, uh, on a platform called I Create. Um, the, uh, it's, uh, been up and running for probably a little more than a decade now. Um, G H D has decided to, uh, launch a new platform, um, and to shut down the old platform. The new platform is called GovStack, replacing the, um, the old I Create platform, uh, and its life is June the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Um, got some information on this right as we were wrapping up the budget, uh, we knew it was going to be a twenty-six, um, budget item at that point, I didn't want to delay the budget any longer, so now we're kind of picking it up. Um, the costs that are related to it, as far as the implementation and, and the migration from the old system to the new system is just over thirty thousand dollars, with an increase of about thirty-four hundred dollars, which doesn't seem like a lot, but as, when you look at it from a budget, uh, from a percentage perspective, it's a fifteen percent increase. Um, the reason that we're bringing it up now is that, um, G H D is scheduling the implementation, they'd like to begin the implementation with Smith Falls, or, or they have the time to implement, uh, Smith Falls starting in September, so that they don't run into any problems. They've agreed to defer the payments, uh, until twenty-six, so it can be a part of the twenty-six budget, uh, however, they need the agreement signed, as per the procurement bylaw, uh, we didn't want to move forward with, uh, entering into an agreement without, uh, coming to council and getting a resolution from council. So again, the dollars don't relate to twenty twenty-five at all, so there's no budget impact in twenty twenty-five, but there is a commitment level, uh, that we would be looking at, um, coming up fairly shortly in order to, um, to facilitate this move. Uh, Smith Falls has, uh, started the, um, the, uh, the new website four years ago and it's been active for three years. At that point, um, our rep at G H D wasn't aware that they were moving over to the new platform, um, which is one of the first questions I asked. It's, it's a, it's a little bit of an unusual, uh, situation where the company is just, um, uh, making that move and, and, and charging people to, um, to move over to the system. Um, I, uh, one of the other questions I asked is that, could we continue on? Is this a loss of support and we can continue on with it? And they informed us, no, they're, they're shutting down the lights on June thirtieth in, uh, two thousand twenty-six, uh, so I, I create, it's just completely being shut down. Um, there are some, uh, a number of, of increases in, uh, function and usage, which is, which is very good news, uh, mostly related to security, speed and customization. Security, um, uh, the Azure S Q L, um, um, database is just much more secure and faster than the old Microsoft, um, S Q L database. Um, so we will look at increased security, we'll look at increased speed, they have some smart technology on it which monitors traffic flow, so during election time, if there was online, um, uh, voting and there was, uh, increased activity, um, more, uh, there's more commitment to, uh, to, to, to the, uh, traffic flow, uh, or the, or the service, uh, uh, that will accommodate the traffic flows. There's a lot more customization within it, so a lot of the pieces that we would... So a lot of the pieces that we would get GHD to make changes to the website, a lot of the upgrades and the changes, we can actually do internally now. So some of those fees that we would pay in the past to GHD, we won't have to pay those anymore because we'll be able to do it internally. And then they've also increased the capacity to have other organizations within, within the website, meaning Downtown Business Association, the library, police service support. They can all be combined into one website, keeping their own logo and look and so that they look like their own websites, but it's all contained within one website. So, I mean, there are certainly a number of increases and capabilities of what the new platform will do. But the other option to that is to cut ties with GHD and move to a new platform, which would be starting again designing a new website. The last time I did it with a smaller website than this, back in 2016, it was about $100,000. So I estimated in there that we'd be looking at about $150,000 touch if we were to, if we were to move services.
Thanks. Questions? Counselor McKenna?
Well, thanks very much. Director, I know you're developing the Information Technology Strategic Plan for the organization. How will this align or not align with that broader vision?
Because of the fact that the IT strategy would be from a very high level, I don't think the details, kind of the ground-level details of the functionality and that sort of thing, I don't think that's going to actually play into the IT strategy. It's really going to be looking more at how do we communicate with the public? How do we provide information and what information can be accessed? So in that regard, there would be increased functionality when that comes. So we'll make sure that that's captured. I've actually got my last meeting with the consultants for the IT strategy tomorrow. So we'll certainly be having that discussion tomorrow about those increased capabilities and see where it comes within the end of the strategy.
Thank you. I'm supportive of the staff recommendation.
Seeing no hands? I've got a question on, it's got a lot more functionality side of it. What's it going to do for the user experience to make it easier to navigate and see through what you want to find?
It, well, it's, because of the fact that, I wrote something down here. Because of the fact that it's updating to better technologies as far as the search functionality, we should see an increase in the Google search functionality. There's another platform that we can put on for search, but it's really, really expensive. So I'd like to work with them in order to make sure that we can fully have that search capability within the Google platform. And I did identify that, I believe that was a concern that the search functionality maybe didn't, wasn't as strong as it could be. So I've identified that with the consultants and they've agreed to that they will address that during the migration to make sure that we have the full capacity for functionality. As we move towards technologies that provide more information or more interactive with the public, it will provide more bandwidth, bandwidth was the word I was trying to think of earlier. It provides more bandwidth and easier access to access services such as, if we, as we move more, increasing in our GIS capabilities, then there might be GIS capabilities for the residents to access. And as, again, as we move different technologies in the financial systems, accessing current and pre-passed tax bills, water bills, that sort of thing, there will be an increased capacity for that, as well as booking ICE and any pieces that we might identify in the IT strategy as far as recreation goes. So any of those changes that we make, it will increase those services.
But the new website allows to host our bylaws, past reports and meeting minutes?
Yeah, I believe so, but I'll have to double check with how it will integrate with, I just went blank with the name of our agenda system. Escribe, thank you. We'll just have to double check with how it interfaces with Escribe. But if we don't have it in Escribe, then there is an ability to have, have the information in the cloud. So right now, Microsoft, the Microsoft SQL system, if we were to put all of our bylaws up there, the resident would access it and the information would come back through our servers here. And then the information will go back from the servers out. Moving into the Azure SQL system, it is true cloud technology. So those reports, all those PDFs would be in the cloud, hosted in the cloud. So the residents will be able to access all that information quicker if we chose to go that way as opposed to having it interface with Escribe.
Okay, so unlike the last time when we update, we're not going to lose access to old reports and meeting content?
The idea is we shouldn't, and I don't see why we would. But I don't want to put 100% guarantee on that because anything to do with IT is difficult to put that guarantee on it. But I don't see why we would lose that information because of the fact that, again, it's not, they're not coming into our servers to access the information now. It's going to be true cloud computing, so we shouldn't have to lose that information. And I don't see why we would. But I have, that question has not been addressed specifically, but I can find out more.
And seeing no hands, last question is, is it, how do we pay for the data we store in the cloud? Is it based on tiers or is it unlimited or how does the charging work?
I'll have to double check as far as, I imagine that it would be a tier system and there's a certain amount that would be included within the website. If we're going to get in a full range of bylaws and all the various reports, I'll have to get back to you on exactly how much information that would be and then how much we would, we would end up paying for that. But I can certainly find that out.
Counselor Quinn?
No, you've been asking the questions, so thank you.
Seeing no other hands up, thumbs up for the staff recommendation. All right, thank you, Director Dalber. Next is our asset management plan update.
So through the Chair, this report is kind of a preamble to June 23rd. So our asset management consultants, Public Sector Digest, will be reporting. It'll be the same gentleman that reported our 2024 asset management plan. He will also be reporting our 2025 asset management plan. The last one in 2024 identified all assets. And then the changes from '25 is it brings in proposed levels of service for all those assets, lifecycle management strategies and also a financial strategy that would see us move towards full funding of the assets at some point, at a given point, which with most municipalities, it's much more than a decade to be able to get to that full funding. The reason that I am bringing this report ahead of the asset management plan is I wanted to kind of pave the way for it and make sure that I provide information on what the asset management plan is and what it's not. So the asset management plan that's going to be reported is a part of an overall asset management strategy. It's kind of the strategy or strategization of the plan. Sort of like our town strategy works with the budget and works with the various departments with input in order to come up with a plan to implement that strategy. In 2024, the plan identified risks, identified the assets and the inventory of assets and then looked at the estimated useful life of those assets. And what I mean by that is how long those assets are good for, at what point do they need to be replaced and how much will it cost to replace? So the 2024 plan identified that at a high level, we'd be looking at a yearly annual contribution of $10 million. And then our information showed that we would contribute, and I'm sorry, I'm giving a bit of detail, but I'm going to bring it back to a higher level point. We do a contribution through the budget, through the tax portion of 1.8 million, water of 580,000, wastewater of 715, and then our gas tax of 606,000 and OCIF of 965. That shows that we have funding for 4.6 million, so we're shy by 5.4 million. The reason that I gave that level of detail is to say, that's where the asset management plan is at. That will give us the context that we can prepare our budgets and then bring forward the lifecycle plans that we're currently working on. The OSIM reports that are done every other year, the roads needs and linear assets combination that Public Works is reporting right now to be able to bring a 10-year plan of the roads and the water and sewer infrastructure to be replaced over the next 10 years. The IT strategy that we're currently working on that right now has an estimated timeframe of about end of July. So we should be able to kind of work that into the budget. And the building condition assessments, which are currently being awarded. So they're all lifecycle plans that'll come back with that level of detail that will take the financial information from the strategy of the asset management plan in order to look at what are our capacities? How many of these projects can we do on a yearly basis? So the asset management plan will come back with that high-level strategy and our lifecycle plans will come back with that 10-year plan that we can take the information from the asset management plan and put some restrictions around it to be able to continually replace the assets without running out of reserves and without running out of money and making sure that we are financially healthy. So when the consultant comes on June 23rd, it's going to be that high-level strategy. And then staff are working on the lifecycle plans to apply to that, the strategy from the plan. And then that'll come back to council at the, for the 2026 budget process.
Great. Questions, comments? Counselor McKenna?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Dalber. Very interested in the asset manager planning strategy. I'm also keen to know how much is driven by provincial regulations? The provinces said municipalities shall have this and by have it by this date. But when it comes to the operationalizing of the asset manager plan, you talked about self-imposed restrictions. Are there, where I'm going is if we get a council two terms from now that a very austere council said, we're not spending any, we're cutting back on everything, does the, does the asset manager plan have the kind of weight or do regulations have the kind of weight that say, no, you have to keep working on your assets? You can't take a pause?
So through the Chair, I think the question you ask probably has a couple of different components. As far as not stopping on continually, continual improvement, the requirement of the 58817 going forward, this is the last portion in '25 that'll get us up to speed and make us legislatively compliant. However, going forward, there's a requirement for every five years that a new asset management plan will be done and will be updated and it'll be tied to funding and all those sorts of things. There has been some municipalities that have been running a trial for the ministry in their financial information reporting where they're actually putting in a section that's asset management within that financial information reporting. So then there's movement on a yearly basis to show which of those projects that have been identified are actually, are done and are currently being worked on. I think the idea, or one of the, one of the things that might come out of this is that funding agencies can actually just look at our financial information return. They have the asset management information right there and they can make quicker decisions, maybe turn around a little bit quicker. I think that's the theory and some of that is an assumption on my part. But I believe that's why they would put it within the FIR. As far as legislative requirements, and I hope I heard you right, there are certainly legislative requirements such as the Clean Water Act that would strive to make sure that we're replacing our water and wastewater assets and pushing towards it and making sure that that actually happens with the water rate study, with the financial plan that goes along with it. So inadvertently, it doesn't say thou shalt replace these parts on a regular basis, but what it does is it provides a level expectation and it provides consequences that would kind of drive council to make sure that those assets are being looked after. For the other side of the assets, it's not nearly as defined as it is in water and wastewater. So to your question, you know, we may set this up and we may say something like, in order to be able to fully fund the assets for Smith Falls on X levels of service or the expectations of level of service. At one point, I said, you know, our levels of service, maybe we want our roads to be absolute glass and smooth as silk. But then there's a cost that goes along with that. So we may trim that back and look something more that lines up with the minimum maintenance standard, something that's a little more affordable. And we can come up with a plan and we can come up with a 10-year plan of which assets, which roads, which sidewalks are being replaced and council can approve the plan. But as far as a future council, you know, saying we want to cut that back, there's nothing at this point that would stop the council from being able to do that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I wasn't worried about over-delivering on our asset manager plan. I was really concerned about in the future, people not follow, council's not following it. And, and I guess what you've told me is that's council's choice.
Yes.
So there's not, other than the water and we have to keep a road. There's certain regulation that we have to, you know, operationalize a road and that. But it's really, you can have a great plan, but if you don't follow it, that's my concern.
So through the Chair, just to add on to that, we can, and we'll certainly look at the financial side because as you said, that really kind of ties in quite a bit. A number of municipalities have moved towards some form of identification of how they're going to pay for it and how they're going to increase it over the next. The Town of Aurora, they, for example, I believe that they collect a capital contribution within their tax statement or their tax bill. And from that, they have a set amount that they show as an increase in that on a yearly basis, which at the end of 20 years makes them fully funded with their assets and replacing it. Now, there's been a lot of variations. It may not be, you know, a separate line on the tax bill. But on the 23rd, there certainly will be talk about what the shortfall is. And we have to have a financial plan to be able to meet those targets or at least have it fully funded at some point. At this point, you know, it could be something like, you know, this, the Aurora plan or something similar, which will get us fully funded in 20 years. Or depending on how exactly it rolls out, it could be saying in 20 years, we'll be 75% funded and then it'll take another five or 10 years to be able to be fully funded. There's a lot of variety in what the plans are. I don't think the, there's not a set timeframe on expectation levels from the provinces. So every municipality does what they can to be able to get to that point. But the idea is, is once you've said it, it's a good starting point. It's a good dashboard and it gets adjusted on a yearly basis. So hopefully that's kept in mind with future councils.
Thank you.
Great. Seeing no further questions, we receive that for information and look forward to the 23rd.
Thank you.
Brings us to Bill 17, summary with Manager Crinkie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Council Committee. This report brings for council's update and consideration a summary of some additional proposed changes to some of the legislation that our development team works with on a daily basis, notably changes to Planning Act, Building Code Act and Development Charges Act. So over the last number of years, we've seen a few of these changes, usually one a year. And this one, this one focuses, I think, the, or as with some of the previous ones, it's difficult to make a really defined assessment on municipal impact until we see how some of these regulations, what some of the regulations look like. So the few of the changes here that we're looking at, the province is delegating regulation authority to the minister to define that. So the timing of this report and sort of the review and assessment was based around the Regulatory Registry of Ontario posting that called for, that had comments open until June 12th. So we understand that Royal Assent was actually given late last week on Bill 17. So council still has the opportunity, if council wishes to provide feedback to the open comment portal. So I'll just quickly go over some of the, some of the changes that we're looking at. The first one, that's an interesting one, is change the minor variance process. So essentially what the province is proposing is So essentially what the province is proposing is allowing a little bit of grace for for setback reductions. Regulation, the regulation would define what that grace looks like potentially. The number I've seen thrown around is is 10%. So if zoning by law requires a front yard setback of six meters, then somebody can build as of right at 5.4 meters. If that 10% is becomes the magic, the magic number. So effectively, then the zoning requirement becomes 5.4 meters. It's it's an interesting one size fits all approach. It can lead to unintended consequences. As an example, we have a 1.2 meter side yard setbacks in our zoning by law in most of our residential zones. And that's that's related to building code requirements for windows and non flammable materials on the side. So if somebody's encroaching, say, 1.12 centimeters into that, that may affect the future development potential on on the other side. So the I I think it's an interesting, it's an interesting suggestion and and or an interesting, an interesting planning change. But with that one size, with with that one size fits all provision, it really, it means there there could be. There's, I think, a few things that need to be clarified. So for instance, our zoning by law, we require six meter front yard setback, that's 20 feet. But the zoning by law allows if you're if you're in a in an established residential neighborhood, say, one of our older, more historic streets. When all of the buildings are three meters from the street, then you're allowed to build as of right three meters if that's the average setback. So it's so my suggestion would be that there'd be some clarity here to confirm, is this net or is this gross? Our zoning by law allows a few permitted encroachments, say, a porch or or an air conditioning unit or an eve. Or a few other things can actually be a little bit closer to the lot line than otherwise permitted. So it's not clear from my read of the of the legislation, is this net or is this gross? So I think, given the the unique local context of each site, I think also my suggestion is that as of right approval of the setback reductions. Rather than being automatic up to a certain number, that discretion be that they be discretionary. And if there's really an assessment of zero impact, if there's no reason why it's shouldn't happen or it doesn't doesn't make sense. Then potentially that can get approved as of right. And if there is a potential for an impact, then perhaps that's based on the based on the assessment of somebody, could be an employee, could be somebody. Would would make that referral to the the Committee for Minor Variance Application. So I think creating that clarification and creating that additional level of that additional level of of review before before automatic approval. I think would help clarify some potentially unintended consequences of this. Yes, supporting studies requirements, their province has outlined a number of changes to to the planning process. As it relates to to supporting studies and there's three main changes. So one of those is to limit the impact of the ability of municipalities to require additional information to to support a a planning application. And that that responds to concerns that we've or that that the province has heard across the board. That the the scope of requirements across communities is quite quite variable. So for instance, most municipalities ask for a different for for various studies, servicing brief, noise and vibration study, stormwater management, any any range of supporting studies. And those are typically provided for in official plans. But they have, but what we look for in those supporting studies can can vary. So it makes sense. Toronto's going to look for something different than Smith Falls or just going to look for something different than than Beckwith Township. But I think the argument is Perth or Perth and Smith Falls might, a developer might expect that we would be looking for for more or less the same, more or less the same thing. So I think that's the that's the rationale for for the intended change. Another another proposed new regulation that would supersede official plans is define what actually may or may not be required as part of a complete application. So that would be a new regulation authority that would would actually step in and kind of standardize across the board what municipalities can ask for to. To support or not support a a development application. So at this point, what's been floated is wind studies, lighting plans and design briefs. As as studies that that we would no longer be be allowed to ask for. So typically, we we don't ask for a lot of those studies, given that we don't have very tall development happening in Smith Falls. But a lighting plan, for instance, I I asked for that quite routinely when we're looking at a development with the with a large parking area. And that's really to confirm that our own official plans requirements for for dark sky compliant lighting is is met. We don't want to see, we don't want to see flood lighting that spills over into neighboring residential areas, as an example. And then the proposed, the the bill also proposed a regulation to define who can undertake a study. And require the municipality to accept those prepared by a certified professional who can sign and and stamp that. So I think that's that's again, it's attempting to to standardize the the approach across the board. However, it bypasses the ability for municipalities to identify your own requirements. Potentially a bigger concern from from my read of the legislation is it looks to essentially obligate us to require a. Accept a an engineered plan, as an example, as as a right, stormwater management, servicing, any any of those. So typically, we've we undertake peer reviews on those if we don't have the. And and the peer review, it does add timing to the process. If we have to go to a third party to do that, it it adds cost. But what a what an independent review can also do is shed new light on the review of an application, lead to revisions that ultimately generate a better outcome for the developer and and the broader public interest. And we've we've had those those conversations, especially with results of of larger scale developments, subdivisions and so on. Where through the review process, we've resulted in a development that's that's better and and minimizes the minimizes potential adverse impacts on on the community and on ours. So I think in our suggested discussion points are to is focus on more the the terms of reference for the studies. Providing a standard across the province while allowing municipalities to properly consider consider local context. And I think also the ability to comment and revise or comment on through through a peer review process, I think, is is important. And in terms of achieving better outcomes, there's a proposed change to simplify.
Got a question.
Oh, sorry.
Just thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Carol, but I I had something on the study question before you moved on to the next session. So you talked about the terms of reference. Are the studies that municipalities ask for, is are their names standardized across? So if you see lighting study, is a lighting study the same no matter where you are? And is a are the studies standardized in reg somewhere or what?
It through you, Mr. Chair, it depends on depends on on the study. And and certainly, if we're looking at a transportation study, a stormwater management, typically there's and Director McMon can 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 speak to. Can speak more detail to the sort of those governing authorities. But typically, there's something that's a little bit more prescribed in engineering standards that are are followed and are followed and met. An environmental impact study, looking at provincially significant wetlands, for instance, those terms have varied as as provincial rules have changed, but each study.
Title, the title lets you know that that's what that is. It's it's standardized.
In my experience, the titles are pretty pretty consistent across the board, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions up to this point? Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, just not to belabor, I agree with your comments on the minor variances. The 10% setback, I think, could be problematic in certain circumstances. So I always like an additional level of of control over that, i.e. the Planning Advisory Committee. And also on the studies, I agree with that as well in your comments. And I can point to one recent file that we dealt with at Planning Advisory Committee, where's a large parking lot. And we wanted to make sure we looked at the lighting. So I I guess these comments you're making are we're going to send back to the provinces or fated complete. It's already got royal assent. So these is just getting it on the books. Am I right?
Certainly, we'll we'll take council's direction on that. If the legislation has received royal assent, then certainly we can, it's. If if council would like to to have our have our name and have our comments registered, then then we can certainly staff will take your direction.
Through the chair, I'll let you finish because I've got another one on long term care homes.
Yeah, just on that point, Mr. Chair. But with is this an opportunity to influence the regulations in in your comments?
I I would hope so, yes. Not all of these regulations have been finalized or what's in those regulations. There's still, there's still more to come on on a lot of those.
CEO Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the, each of these have have kind of their pros and cons, but the one that concerns me mostly are the accepting a study that's been submitted. Typically by a professional, so there are professional standards they need to maintain, of course. But that one, I would suggest we comment on because we've had, we've had recent examples. If you get stormwater management wrong, we own it forever. And that can be hugely problematic. It can suck municipal resources, pardon the phrase. But we really need to comment on that because the peer review, some believe it's unnecessary. I can point to many, many examples over my career where the peer study picks something up that the original consultant did not. Elevations, you get an elevation wrong and you've got flooding forever. Once the houses are sold, the developer, the warranty period ends, they leave, we inherit it. So if we comment on nothing else, I believe strongly we need to comment on.
Great point, CEO Morris. As someone who's done stormwater reviews, that was my comment exactly. And I think it's such an easy thing that maybe adds a few weeks to the process, but in the grand scheme of things, saves so many problems, so.
So the the bill proposes a couple of changes to to make schools to, I guess, facilitate the approval authority for for new schools. Allowing them as of right in in residential zones as well as removing site plan approval authority for for new new portables. I don't really have a concern with that. I think a school is part and parcel of a of a complete community. But I think the important thing from from my perspective is if we do lose the ability to regulate school locations through zoning. Then as more of an operational thing, I would hope for and expect that the school boards will continue to liaise directly with staff as it relates to. Because there are certainly some infrastructure things through the zoning approval that we do have a close look at when we have a new school, including servicing capacity, traffic. Stormwater management, all of those, well, I guess stormwater management would still be dealt with through site plan approval. But all some of those fundamental compatibility issues, I my hope is that that would still continue to be addressed. Proposed changes to Development Charges Act, so there could be some some financial implications here. But I think a challenge with development charges and 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 that has been a little bit of a, that's attracted, I think, development charges as a whole have attracted some some media attention. And some municipalities DCs are much higher than than what we have in in Smith Falls. But development charges are not a, they're not an arbitrary financial collection here. They are a, they they are a model that's governed and carefully regulated through legislation based on the philosophy that growth pays for growth. So if you're having a new subdivision, if a new subdivision is going in or a new apartment building and that's going to generate incrementally generate. In in the long term, some future improvements to or or widening of a road or expansion of a library or or something like that. Then that growth, the growth inherent in that is is intended to to pay for that. So if that's removed from development charges, then that growth still needs to be paid for differently, either through through the tax base as a whole. Or or separately through through a government grant. So I think some of these changes have the potential to sort of rebalance those that that financial that financial ticket, which could have some impacts. So long term care homes is is one of those. So a couple of years ago, the 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 Development Charges Act changed so that long term care homes, they're no longer. Development charges no longer paid at the issue. It's a building permit, but it's actually paid for at the issuance of an occupancy permit. And at that, the the charges would then also be split across into six separate, six equal installments paid one year from from occupancy. So from my reading of of the legislation, that that change is effective immediately. So if there is a development charge, if there's a long term care home that hasn't received occupancy or hasn't paid their full development charge and budgeted for it, then that's. Then we would no longer be able to to collect from the development charges there. So making this provision come into effect upon royal assent, of course, reduces the town's ability to fund this growth related infrastructure. So I think my suggestion and and perhaps it's moot at this point is that the the amendment should be either retroactive to new long term care homes approved after royal assent. Or providing funding support from another source to to offset this this financial impact.
Mayor Panko?
Yeah, this one I find really irritating and and unnecessary, especially when you've got projects which are already underway. So if it's if it's categorized as as an incentive to build future long term care homes. We have a home currently under construction, almost finished, ready, virtually ready for occupancy, probably by September, I believe. All of a sudden now, we can no longer apply DCs upon occupancy. And so there is $465,000 which is gone. And so the question, I guess, if we can go back to the ministry, is where is that gone? Is that essentially a savings for a gift back to the to the builder owner? Or is it money that goes back to the province, which plays a very vital role in funding long term care homes? So I suspect it's probably the latter. And we have hundreds of long term care homes under construction right now across the province with their commitment of over $6 billion to create new beds. Is this simply another method of taking money from municipalities to reduce the cost that the province has to to commit to these projects? So it it's, again, I can see in the long run an incentive, but when these projects were already underway. Royal assent hadn't happened last week. It didn't happen, let's say, till the fall. This wouldn't even be a, it'd be a moot point. But now we're the ones, as our taxpayers, who will feel the pain from this.
Yeah, Counselor Brennan?
That was my comment and question.
Show your thunder.
Yeah, I mean, and I guess my question was, have they not already paid it? But now you you explained that 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 there was a change a couple of years ago, so it's not paid until occupancy. When I read it, I was sort of like, what? So we need to comment on that and we might need to have a delegation or something. I'm sure we're not the only municipality that's thinking about this, so. But that was my question. The mayor asked it, so.
May as well. Yeah, we have a UOMC Eastern Town Mayor's Caucus meeting next week. And I've asked for it on the agenda, because I'm sure there's others within UOMC who are similarly impacted.
So there's a number of other changes as it relates to development charges. One is the deferral of 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 all development charge payments until until occupancy. So historically, development charges are paid for at the time of the building permit. It's a fairly simple process. You're you're paying your development charge, you're picking up your building permit and and away you go. So that some of these changes, this one and and some of the previous ones have added a a few layers of of complexity in terms of. How they are, how the development charges are calculated, who's calculating them, what's the application trigger? And at what stage they're they're payable? So all of that creates, all of that creates certainly a bit of some more more tracking and administration. Smaller municipalities, of course, that's that is, that's something that we'll we'll work through. But the purpose of the deferral, of course, is to allow a later payment, preserving funds for other forms of development that typically require a large capital input at the. Or upfront, just to make up for the absence of revenue. So I think that does, that makes certainly it's understandable where this is where this is coming from. But I think and and recognizing that that's likely going to, we're likely going to be sort of moving in that direction as as a province. But we do have a suggestion that we do retain the ability to set interest rates. And that funding be made available for municipalities to offset the anticipated reductions in revenue. And then I think as well, just a more of a clarification point on on the on the occupancy, confirming whether this is that first occupancy. We don't necessarily, if it's an apartment building, a rental townhouse unit, townhouse complex, occupancies don't all happen at the same time. Sometimes they are staggered as its bits and pieces of the project get completed, so some some clarification points. There's a a number of other changes streamlined process for for certain amendments. So if we're but put very, I guess, just to boil down, if we're proposing changes to our development charges by law. That require that have the effect of of lowering development charge payments, then typically that the the process to amend the bylaw would be easier than if it was. Then than a different sort of or more comprehensive amendment that would go through. that would go through a more rigorous process and background study. Some changes to the DC freeze rule, definition of capital costs, that's one that we can't really tell what that's going to mean until we have, until we have the regulation made. But the uncertainty introduced by this regulatory power could have hampered municipal efforts to prepare accurate and predictable capital plans, require us to build in some contingency planning. And certainly, it's a little unclear as well whether that's, my sense is that we're probably not going to have to change existing development charge bylaws, but there will likely be a transition period that comes in, that comes in at some point for future ones. But if the definition for what's an eligible capital expense changes, then our ability to collect a development charge on that may change as well. And if that's a reduced amount, then certainly that we would need to look at capital budgeting a little bit differently in the longer term. Again, it's hard to know what the overall impact of that change is going to be yet until we have a regulation coming into effect. Same thing with the definition of defining local services, section 59 of the Act. Development Charges Act allows us to define local, or allows us to delineate a local service which developers require to construct as a condition of subdivision approval, which they do. But the Act doesn't really define what a local service is. So they are proposing to do that definition. And I think creating that standardized approach is logical. It makes, it makes sense. And I think staff will certainly support the broader aims behind this legislation of making development consistent and predictable. I think that's important. But it's tough to know what that's going to mean without actually seeing what the next step is and certainly, and hopefully, that that captures a growth. So proposed changes to the Building Code Act, there's a couple of changes that will have, won't have a whole lot of impact on Smith Falls, most likely. But one is preventing municipalities from passing bylaws respecting the construction or demolition of buildings. That's essentially clawing back what some municipalities have done over the last number of years, particularly as it relates to creating new green building standards. So some have done that, City of Toronto and some others have. It's, I guess, arguable as to sort of where that, if they had that authority in the Building Code Act, but they're trying to remove that either way. And also simplified approval of new material systems and designs, essentially removing some of the duplication if somebody's creating a new material that, to go into construction. So building staff support those changes. They, they view the consistent approach and the removal of duplication as helpful. I think my encouragement would be the ministry considers adopting and standardizing sustainable building standards in the code or those standards achieve measurable benefits at a minimal additional cost to the consumer. So there's also a number of other changes, Planning Act and related legislation. The report outlines three, none of which really relate a whole lot to the town of Smith Falls, inclusionary zoning. That's where there's a requirement for development to include affordable units around major transit stations. That's being clawed back somewhat. We don't have those in Smith Falls, but I think that's one of, I know there, we've been advocating for the province to sort of expand the inclusionary zoning provisions. So that's, it looks like that's getting clawed back as it relates to the other communities where it's allowed. There's a number of other, the Bill 17 also introduces a number of, I guess, not as part of the legislation, but a number of other things that they'd like to start working on the next little while. So consultations to facilitate communal services relating to water and water and septic systems. That's mostly applicable to rural areas, governance of public utility models. That's one thing that they'll be commenting on, that at this point, we don't have anything to work with. The Ministry of Transportation is also looking to consult with municipalities and others this fall on a framework for greater harmonization, clarified governance, municipal road design standards. One thing we're working on, as we mentioned a couple of weeks ago, is the transportation master plan that's looking at road cross-sections. So it's not clear to me at this point whether that's going to, whether that's going to impact our work and our ability to define a desirable cross-section. As council's aware, we're working on road plans that have, there's the traveled width, the parking area, bike lanes on sort of the more traveled areas, sidewalks, all of those form part of a cross-section. So it's not clear at this point whether that is all going to be standardized across the board. And also, there's, the province is also going to be looking at potentially changes to the planning process, including standardizing official plan designations. So the town of Smith Falls has a residential designation, town of Perth has a residential designation, a larger city probably has a residential designation, but they all, other than sort of the broad definitions advised in the provincial planning statement, how each treat these residential designations is very different. So whether or not we should or could standardize those, the province will, we expect that they're going to be looking at that. So the changes brought forward, they do signal a broad shift towards standardization, streamlining, also an increased provincial oversight on some aspects of development approval. So I think there's, some of these changes require additional consideration as it relates to unanticipated impacts, including on the financial, on the financial end. So I think at this point, there's a few suggested comments and elements of feedback that can be provided to the ministry. And I'll look for, this board is prepared for council's information and we'll take council's direction as to how you wish to proceed with respect to feedback.
Great. Thanks, Carol. Not seeing any hands up, Council McKenna?
I'm fine with Carol's feedback to the province. And I want to thank you for really thorough review of Bill 17, even though it's passed. It's, but if we can impact the regulations. And it looks like the government will be tweaking with the Planning Act. It seems every couple of years, there's a new version. So you just keep going. So I'm supportive of going under your advice. Thank you.
Seeing thumbs up. So we'll send that for the record in hopes it affects the regulation, but another provincial one-size-fits-all that doesn't really fit for us. So thank you for summarizing it tonight and hopefully the regulations are in our favor, I guess.
Thank you.
Next, we've got amended the town's flag protocol report with.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bringing forward a small amendment to our flag policy that was passed, I believe, in 2018. Looking to add one section in it that would give the mayor some discretion that was found a couple of months ago. There's a bit of a gap. It does denote where we can lower the flags if someone passes away, a sovereign, whether it's a committee member, a police officer, fire department, et cetera. However, it didn't, it didn't have anything in there for people in our community who have just impacted our community in one way or the other. So we're looking to add a clause in there that would give the mayor some discretion in consultation with the CAO to give the clerk direction to lower the flags in those circumstances.
Thanks, Director Costello. Council McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does the mayor actually want that discretion? Because be careful what you ask for, you know, there'll be lots of people coming forward who think mom, dad, grandpa should have the flag lowered and you and the CAO have nothing but your discretion to. So that was my only comment. I understand, but.
When I read the report, I'd like to see it amended to include community award winners, so citizen of the year or any of the awards that we hand out every year, because then that significantly opens it up. And we could even add past committee members, because at the end of the day, if somebody's made a significant contribution to the town, they've probably been on a committee, they've probably received an award. And then it just keeps it from being too, the whole reason we have the policy is to not have to use that discretion. So that would be my proposed amendment to it. Council Brennan?
I'm fine with that. There was an instance that it should have applied and it didn't. So that would, that would have taken, that amendment would take care of that as well.
So can I just clarify? So we will amend it and for the record as well, Council McKenna, it was Mayor Panko who requested it for this amendment. So looking to amend it for mayoral discretion, as well as adding provisions for current and former committee members, as well as community award winners. Is there support for that?
Well, citizens of the year, I guess, is a category that we've probably looked upon. Include, yeah, maybe as part of this community awards, right, I guess, essentially.
My preference would be to take out the discretion, so it's still a policy, but.
There may, Mr. Chair, there may still be areas where people fall through the cracks, as we've had recently, that I think, and I think it's a matter of myself and future mayors just having that, the closer the parameters are better, but there may be the odd time when something does come up. And I think myself or future mayors could act with a degree of discretion where it's appropriate.
Council McKenna?
And can you request not have the flag lowered? If I kick off tomorrow, I don't want the flag lowered.
No, we're going over that. Sure, sure, Council McKenna, don't worry about that.
I'll be watching.
Any other comments on the mayoral discretion section? Okay, seems like there's consensus in favor of it, so.
Okay, I will make those amendments and that'll come forward next week at the council meeting.
All right. We don't get to the point where our flag's always at half-mast, but we'll see. 10.9 is application to rename the seniors' activity building.
Thank you. As council recall, not too many years ago, we did develop a naming of municipal assets policy and protocol. At that time, it was to name the freestyle park after Chief Larry Hardy. This is the second time we've used this policy. We've had an application submitted to rename the seniors' activity building after Bud Fawcett. So we have followed the, or we are following those procedures in that. So so far, this has been sent out to staff to ensure that there's no conflict with street naming, et cetera. There was no comments, no comments received except full support. And next, it comes to council so that you're aware of the application. It will go out this evening to start the public comment portion, so we allow for public comment. And as well, if, when the public is commenting or yourself, if you have a name suggestion, the applicant didn't come forward with the name, just that it honored the memory of Mr. Fawcett. So we're looking at having that out for two weeks. And if council concurs, bringing forward a recommendation of the name at the June 23 Committee, the whole with passing of a bylaw that evening.
Council Miller?
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Costello. The Fawcett family is very touched by this. And so I fully support your recommendation.
Council Brennan?
As do I, but was a great citizen of the town. And I just mentioned, I know you have a great synopsis here, but the senior center today has over 400 members, and that's largely because of Bud and Gloria. So they're really, really happy to hear that this may happen. So I fully, fully support it.
I think we will continue on the process.
All right. Thanks, Clerk Costello. Do we have any committee board or external organization updates this evening? Seeing none. We've got no other items on the agenda, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. By Council Robinson, seconded by Councilor Brennan, that the committee adjourned its proceedings at 6:23 PM. It stands so adjourned until the next duly called committee meeting. All in favor? That is carried. Who guessed 6:20?